Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners today, October 18th, 2022. This is our second business meeting of the month. First item of business, I just want to announce that Commissioner Striblin couldn't be with us in person, but he is participating via Zoom. So glad to have you there, Tom. And we'll go ahead and get started. The approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, have it. Next is the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from our public hearing for the UDO amendments on October the 4th, as well as our regular meeting minutes from October the 4th. Having had a chance to review those, it's distributed by the clerk. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. For the chairman's report, the only thing I'll have today, I just did want to mention, I know we sometimes recognize significant passings in our community, and we did recently, since our last meeting, former member of the tribal council, Tommy Sanuk, who had been there for decades, who left a lasting impression on Cherokee and tribal politics and was always willing and interested in meeting with us and being a partner in this region. And I just want to offer our condolences to her family on the passing of a great tribal leader, Tommy Sanuk. With that being said, I'll recognize Commissioner Jones. Any report to that?
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Woody?
Yes. I had the privilege of attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Board of Directors meeting, and they have asked me to serve on the task force, the initiative for this year. Every year, the association picks an initiative. Last year, it was the ready for emergency services, and we followed through with what they suggested here in Jackson County. And this year, it's 100 counties connected, and it's broadband initiative. And so on Thursday, we had a meeting, this task force, and I'm representing the far west. Deputy Secretary of Broadband and Digital Equity Nate Denny was the main presenter. And there were a couple of things that he brought up that I think are very important and that I would like us to look into. One of those, obviously, we have gotten some great grants, and we've gotten some federal money from the infrastructure, and we're very pleased about that. One thing we need to hold them accountable is they don't get any money until the addresses that they serve are revealed. And that was something they stressed, that unlike past initiatives where sometimes the money was given to these providers up front, they can't access that money until those providers show the addresses that they've served. So we want to make sure that we hold them accountable to that. And he encouraged that for each of us in our local counties. And then the second thing was cab grants are going to be coming, completing access to broadband. And the state is using $90 million of their ARP funds to do this. And he suggested that one of the biggest issues, and it wasn't just in rural counties, I was kind of surprised that Mecklenburg County had this problem as well. But they, as you know, the mapping, if they have one person who's receiving high-speed internet in a census area, that's considered served. Well, we all know that's not accurate, and especially in the mountains where you can have somebody served on one side of the ridge and no service on the other side of the ridge. So what he encouraged was that we do our own mapping, that we figure out what level of service is available so that we can access those cab grants. Because the data we're getting is not accurate for Jackson County, which is true for many counties. And so he, there were several suggestions. We could use GIS, we could use a WCU intern, and Matthew, who used to be our intern here, is now working with Buncombe County, and he might be willing to, he said he would be willing to talk to Mr. Adams about helping us with that as well. But if we can have address-level data, then we're going to be upfront to be able to access part of that $90 million with the cab grants. But we have to be proactive on that.
Okay.
Just to follow through with that?
Yes.
What I do have is online here, this is our homepage that you're looking at on the screen, and every time, our economic developer has a chance to reiterate, it is extremely important for everyone to fill out this broadband survey. This does get into trying to identify, this goes back to the state relying on those federal maps that basically lose what type of speed that you have in certain areas. And we all know they're inaccurate, and this is the methodology that's being used. The more people in our community that will fill out this survey, the more empowered we will be to do exactly what you're saying.
Right.
This is on our, on our jacksonnc.org page, and it's right there in the middle of the North Carolina broadband survey.
And, yes, and I appreciate that, Don. That is absolutely important, and many of the counties are doing that as well. What they stress to us is we can't count on that alone. And I know you know that, that we're going to need to take it to the next level of looking at addresses, every address on our tax roll or something, and find out who's getting it and who isn't. And then that will give us the most accurate data so that we can get this completing access to broadband fund.
Okay.
Is that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I do believe our efforts, people are working really hard in Jackson County to find out this data, but what they encouraged us to do is take it to the next level, to get the most comprehensive as possible.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Dees?
Only one thing. I was glad to represent our commissioners at the University of Tennessee Saturday. Tennessee beat Alabama.
Oh, my goodness.
I just want you to know that y'all were one of the reasons I went.
Thank you so much. I know that was a real sacrifice on your part, but we appreciate that.
Commissioner Striblin?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything today.
Okay, very good then. Mr. Manager?
I just have a brief verbal report today. The animal rescue, we currently have the site paved, the landscaping done. They're currently working on, the flooring is done on the inside, and they're doing the built-in cabinets and so forth, and painting. We should go into next month of what's called the punch-out list, and ultimately gives the contractor 30 days ultimately to fix it. So hopefully, where we'll be is the beginning of the calendar year, basically looking at the final delivery of the pens and the equipment. And all of that is on order at this point, and once that is installed, we can talk, be talking about moving in. Right now, I encourage commissioners, if you don't have time to drive through there now, it's a cleaner site. And what I mean by that, now that it's paved and things of that nature, and with the landscaping down, it's starting to really come together. I think, boys, you and I went out there a couple of months ago, and the cause of where it was and the process, it just looked like there's a tremendous amount left. But when you get all these finishes done, they're near completion, it really starts showing you how close they are. And so ultimately, hopefully, we'll be looking at the beginning of the calendar year, and again, we'll be subject to the pen, the delivery of the pens and things of that nature. But we're on the tail end of that project. Next is Aquatic Center, everything's moving forward. I think everyone saw the newspaper article where I promised, I think, is way stated that that project would not interfere with the election. Well, we've done everything we can possible to make sure that that construction is not going to interfere with the election, and everything's moving forward. Once the new parking lot is finished, that'll allow us to transition all the parking to the rear of the facility, and then ultimately, that's what'll allow us to close off the main parking lot and proceed forward with the main construction. Domestic violence shelter, the Center for Domestic Peace Facility Planning Committee, last Friday, they did go and visit shelter, Safe Flight Shelter in Hendersonville. We're tempted, we're tempted to try to go to two shelters that day, and unfortunately, we got caught in the traffic coming back from Hendersonville. And so we're going to try to reschedule and try to visit another shelter, and then that will allow us to start the planning process and move forward with that shelter. The cashers splash pad and courts, we have received a schedule from the architect. We are beginning the surveying and the planning, which should be done sometime in March. And unfortunately, the construction documents will probably take through summer, and then so we will be looking to go out to bid somewhere in August or so forth with that project. Opioid regional planning, the Russ Harris from Southwestern Commission, he has called a meeting of the county managers tomorrow. The purpose of that meeting is for us to just start strategizing and coming up with how we proceed forward with the next steps of regional planning. No decisions are made on how the money is expended. This is, this is a meeting to determine a planning process, is what it really is. And so that'll be the first steps of a, of a larger regional planning process for, if there's any opportunity, see if there's any opportunities for expending those opioid dollars on a regional basis. And then finally, the Citizens Academy is coming to an end. Food starts at, the meal starts at five, and the, as normal, we end presentations with Department of Agents, Social Services, and Veterans. And then we have a small graduation ceremony at the end, so all commissioners are welcome to attend. And Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Any questions for the manager?
Got a question on the shelters subject that you visited. Are they new, newer construction or the programming aspect?
The Safe Flight is, is not new. It's an existing shelter, so that was more of a programming conversation. The other one is relatively, it's not a brand-new building, but it's recently renovated, and so we're looking to go visit that shelter to help with that. And it really is to try to come up with really best practices, for one thing, you know, whether it be security through technology and things of that nature. But then also, just starting to come up with better ideas on how we want flow to occur with the clients and also with the staff.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
There's no one signed up to speak or informal comments, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. First item is the finance report for September 2022, and I recognize Ms. Fox, our finance director.
Good afternoon. I'll go over the highlights for the month of September. The general fund revenues collected to date is $27,812,874. That's 33.79% of budget. The expenditures are $20,459,971, and that's 25.84% of the budget. The revenues are $7,352,903, more than the expenditures at the end of September. The Avalon taxes collected is at 40.84% of budget, at $17,329,645. The motor vehicle tax collected is $488,519, that's 27.78% of budget. And the prior year taxes collected is $136,201, that's 19.46% of budget. We received the sales and use tax distribution for the month of September, which was June sales. The amount was $140,968, or 7.53% more than we received in September of 2021. The Article 46 distribution was $229,262, and the amount of increase for the year was 12.74%. And that's above 21.06% for life fiscal year.
Wow, that's great.
The landfill disposal fees collected is $951,449, that's 32.71% of budget. And the prior year landfill disposal fees, $21,390, that's 26.74% of budget. The growth revenues we're tracking, all are above budget for this, environmental health's, what, 0.67% under, but they're all basically above where they should be at this time.
Could you move that up a little bit, Don, so we could see the bottom? Thank, thank you. Yeah, thanks.
And we saw an increase in every category during the month of September.
Is there any question?
And the general fund contingency amount at the end of September was $1,300,947.84. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, hearing no questions, then we'll move on to item two, which is a budget ordinance amendment.
I have one amendment today. The amount's $98,487,4. That categories are insurance settlements for the sheriff's office, DSS, special child adoption from DHHS, and biomedical health grant for DSS.
Questions about the ordinance amendment? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Next is item three, the tax collector and refund reports for September 2022. We recognize our tax collector, Ms. Brandy Henson.
Good afternoon. The current taxes collected for the month of September was $4,786,307. The delinquent taxes collected for the month were $44,827. The total deposited for the month of September was $5,091,126.30. And there were overpayment refunds of $1,609.62, and releases of $1,598.30. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we've heard all three items on the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board concerning its approval?
I move that we accept these reports as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Any question or discussion? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Striblin?
Yes.
Chairman Knightman.
Yes, motion carries. Under new business, item four is the offer to purchase in contract from Kenneth Dingler and/or assigns with resolution R-22-22. We recognize Ms. Baker, our county attorney.
Good afternoon. So these are, I'm going to scroll down just for a minute. You can see on these offers there for $1,000 each for two lots. So I'm going to scroll on down to, this is our current list of properties that the county has. These two lots are in orange. We've owned, the county's owned those since early 2019, so they've been on this list throughout all of these recent purchases and contracts, and I've had no one inquire about them, because when they check out this list and go out to see these lots, they're not really interested. I've known Mr. Dingler was interested, and I've been waiting on him to put in an offer, and he did. He is associated, I'm going to, let me drop down, we'll come back to that. I know this isn't, this isn't an easy map to see, but it shows you several things on here. So these two orange dots, this one here and this one way over here are these two lots. And if you can see, everything here that's in, inside the blue property line is owned by one property owner, and Mr. Dingler is associated with that property owner. So that's why he's interested in them. You can see the slight, the, within this blue boundary, the few red, reddish lines there, those are the few lots within this whole development that were sold before the development went, went under. And so those are the only ones that are owned by someone else, but everything else in here is owned by this particular property owner associated with Mr. Dingler. So he's just trying to put it all back together. And he did, I asked him, you know, if he, if he had any information, why the offer was so low on these, and he did say, these lots were platted and sold when the original subdivision went out, but no roads were ever constructed, and one of them, he didn't tell me which one, only has a trail to it, and there's a creek that you have to go over to get to it, and there's no bridge or road over the creek. And he said he's not sure that they're worth continuing to pay the taxes on, but he's willing to take the chance because they've got the other lots in there. But if someone bids higher, he's okay with that, too. So that was the, the information I received back from, from Mr. Dingler. I did also, Commissioner Jones, I know you like to see that, the tax cards here and the value on these each lots, the value the county has assessed is $25,000 on, on each of them. So these give you a little better sight of the, of the lots. I'm going to go back up to this one here, just to give you an idea. I usually do this first, and I didn't. So way over here is, is 107, and this is going north on 107, just past the covered bridge, so just past the Water Dance lot. And then you see Trout Creek Road, which is the road that runs out, out here. So this is pretty far out, Trout Creek Road, off of 107 is where this is located. And then again, these two lots, one's on this end, this is Lot Two, and then Lot 44 is out this way. And I can answer any questions you have about those.
Are those pretty steep? I mean, it looks from this picture that this is a ridge in here, maybe?
It is. You can see there are some timber reds. I think on, if you, I think this one, you can see a little timber trail on it. That's the one I think he's talking about, but there may be some creeks, too. So I don't, I don't know. I didn't put the contours on this. I know it's steep out in this area, I just don't know how steep these particular lots are.
Such an odd shape.
And of course, if you do approve them to move on, they will go through the upset bid process.
What's the pleasure of the board concerning this request?
I make a motion to move forward with getting these parcels back on the tax roll.
I have a motion to move forward and to start the upset bid process. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
The access is from Trout Creek Road?
Yes.
You know, you can come all the way up, come out the top.
Well, actually, to answer, I should say that the intended access on the, on the flats, when the subdivision was originally divided, was the access off Trout Creek Road. I don't, there may be another act. I did see it connects to Big Ridge. I don't know if that, if that's possible now, but it might be for, for one or both of the lots.
Other questions? Okay, hearing no more, then. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Striblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dees? Chairman Knightman.
Yes, motion carries. And then under old business, item five is the final offer on Lot 48 Bear Pen.
And rather than go back to what you're showing there, I thought I'd show you this first. This, this is the yellow highlighted lot here. We, there was an upset bid process on this, and the final, the final bid I received without upset bid is $6,600. So that's what, if you approve that today, what we would be moving forward on.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board concerning this final offer?
I move that we accept the offer as presented.
Okay, have a motion to accept it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? Hearing none, then. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dees?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Striblin?
Yes.
Chairman Knightman.
Yes, motion carries.
I ask one question. All right, those two pieces, the first two pieces of property, if I'm correct, we sold $1,000 a piece, correct?
Starting the upset bid process at $1,000 each.
We get a upset of $1,000.
Yes.
We're wanting to put them back on, so we can get taxes off of them.
Correct.
It's going to be $1,000, is it going to be the worth of that lot?
No. Your tax administrator is here, so I'm going to look at her, but I believe they'll still be the $25,000. Yeah, so they'll still be assessed at the $25,000.
The $25,000?
Foreclosure sales aren't valid.
They, they don't treat foreclosure sales as valid sales, so they usually take those out of the calculation, and they will keep those at the, at value they've already assessed them at.
Okay.
Ms. Baker, I've got some comment. We had had a discussion months ago about how much these properties that you've been selling, these foreclosed properties, and getting them back on the tax rolls. And it may be the opportune times, not yet, maybe after this closing, because we're getting down to just a few lots. But I sure would be interested to know the total that we've been able to put back into the tax rolls of the properties that we've been able to put back into the public interest.
If, if I'm remembering correctly, a few previous sales ago, it was about $2,600,000. I'm looking at Brandy, she said, yes, $2,600,000, and we've added a few, they've been in this $20,000 range yet, so we've added a few, too. But what I can do is, once these two lots today that you've approved to sale have gone through the upset bid process and come back to you with a final offer on those, I can present that worksheet she sends me as well and get, get that to you.
And then maybe a follow-up to put that into the miller, the property tax rate and see what that's going to bring us back each year.
Sure, I can work with, with them to do that, bring that back at, at that point.
Thank you.
Good information.
Item six. Item six, under legislation, is the electronic tax listing of personal property. This would be resolution R twenty-two dash twenty-three that we'd be approving. This is an item that we took up at our work session recently. So at this time, I'll recognize Tabitha Ash, our tax administrator, to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. And last time I went through it really quickly because we'd had a long opioid discussion at that point. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. I did wanna point out, I've had a few inquiries. Our ultimate goal is to have this available in January for the listing period, but we are midway into a conversion. So our goal is to get the listing forms done and sent out. And then this will just be a bonus if we can get it in. So that's where we're at right now. We hope to get it in in January. But if not, we'll definitely have it implemented going forward in our next listing, listing period. But our, you gotta make sure you get those abstracts actually in there and listed before we worry about the option of electronic. But yeah, this is just a resolution to allow some individuals to go in to an electronic website and list property in that way and addition to the other options that are available. And it just requires a resolution.
You've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we accept this resolution, R twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we've got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dees?
Yes.
Chairman Knightman?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven is the Building Reuse Program. This would be resolution R twenty-two dash twenty-four. If you recall, we also reviewed this one at the work session. And at that time, our Economic Development Director highlighted this item. And, and Mr. Adams, do you wanna provide any additional comments or?
Just, just so, this doesn't just get passed quickly and, and not really recognized for what it is. This is really good news. It's a, it's American Sewing Company, just highlighting a few things. They're looking to add an additional twelve thousand square feet and a renovated portion of his existing building and plans to invest over two point two million dollars and create twelve new full-time jobs, paying at an average wage of eighteen dollars an hour. So that's good news for our, our county and our community. They are applying for this grant. It's a sixty thousand dollar grant for building reuse to help them with this construction. And it requires a three thousand dollar match from the county. So this, basically, this resolution authorizes the chairman or myself to sign off on the grant application.
What's the pleasure of the board concerning this resolution?
I make a motion that we approve R twenty-two dash twenty-four, the Building Reuse Grant to benefit the American Sewing Company.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, then Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Dees?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Chairman Knightman?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us down to our appointment section. On appointment number eight, Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. You should have a letter in your packet from Anna Rogers. And Anna is writing to us to say that Reverend Sarah Lee Hinton to be reappointed for another three-year term. So that's the recommendation that's coming before us. And she has agreed and wishes to be reappointed, so.
I move that we accept this appointment of Reverend Sarah Lee Hinn- Hennett to the Jackson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's correct. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? Okay, hearing none, then Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dees?
Yes.
Chairman Knightman?
Yes, motion carries. And then item nine is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We have a letter here from the, our Director of Jackson County Parks and Rec Department, Mr. Rusty Ellis. Let us know that Jay Sparrow, Greenway Committee, and Adam Holt from the school system both have agreed to set another term on the Recreation Advisory Board. The board met and has voted unanimously in favor of both of these individuals serving another term. So what's the pleasure of this board concerning this recommendation?
I move that we reappoint Jay Sparrow and Adam Holt to serve on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Second, and would like to thank you for serving. I wanna third it.
All right. We, we don't, we, well, we don't need any more seconds or thirds. I guess we got enough more. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Dees?
Yes.
Commissioner Woody?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. We don't have any of the press corps with us or none of them are online. Mr. Adams, any need for close session?
No, sir.
Okay. You're worrying me.
Question from Mr. Adams. On that, going back to that broadband survey that, and the press is not here to hear how important that is, getting the accuracy of that map and that citizens can put their input. Is there one, a way we can issue a, some type of notification back to the Silver Herald and the newspapers to make sure they, they have this covered?
Yeah, we can ask and talk to the Silver Herald about maybe writing another story in regards to that. Maybe have them get up with Ms. Henry and create a story. And also, we need to take an ad out. We can take an ad out.
Let's do this. I know we, we got work session coming up.
Yes.
I know we still have yet to approve the matching funds for the Great Grant. That's, there will be action required of this board for that. There, there are other discussions that we need to have for broadband as a whole. So I think maybe we put that on a work session agenda and just sort of recap where we're at, where Charter is in their process. Maybe we can get an update where Charter is on the ARDOF grant process, get an update on where we're at on the Great Grant process, which ultimately will require action of this board. And then Ms. Henry can give an update as, as to this grants. Because this is a whole separate grant that Commissioner Woody has highlighted today.
It's a new, just.
And in most cases, as I've noted, there are restrictions and rules in place to prohibit the same area being able or eligible to compete for this, for different grants. So I think it'd be worth our effort to have a very in-depth discussion and update on where we're at. And then from that, we can generate some.
Press releases.
Press releases and requests going forward.
Yes, and one thing they did bring up, and, and I'll just briefly say this because we are talking about that this is a broadband survey and it's online. Obviously, people that are not served are not online and cannot answer that survey. So one thing that we will need to do is make a phone number available that they can call and report that they are not served. Because he said, Mr. Nick Denny said that we needed to have those that are served, underserved, and not served. That's excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Good to see you, Tom. Hope, hope you get to feel better.
Thanks.